Um, I want to open the meeting and call it to order of the planning board of the town of Wenham. Um, this night, Thursday, April twenty first, twenty twenty two, it's seven P M or a little after actually seven oh five. Present are board members and weeks Dan Pascarello. Um, sorry, David Anderson. And Rick Woodland, and I'm just clicking through. I do not see Peter Clay here. Margaret Hoffman is not with us. She's on vacation. Catherine Tinsley is recording the meeting and taking minutes. Um, and we have on our agenda tonight, you can see it up on my screen. I don't know if I can scroll down. For you. Have, uh, I, I guess I should also note that this is a virtual meeting because we are still in the governor's. Extended state of emergency, uh, virtual meeting program. And in attendance with us, in addition to the board members are staff member when. Mulry and is it Lucas Fisk is also, I'm going to ask you to introduce yourself in a moment. And, um, members of the public, it looks like Michelle Bailey is on. And sorry for the pinging. That's my email coming over. I can't stop it. We have a public hearing tonight, a national grid tree removal on scenic roads. On the petition of national grid hazard tree mitigation program Nate. Are you on? Okay, so it's, it's Nate. And I don't know, I'm gonna butcher your name, I'm sure. Nitipor.
Uh, Nickapoor.
Nickapoor for proposed removal of trees located along Grapevine Run and Larch Road, both scenic roads designated under M G L section. Chapter forty, section fifteen C. Uh, which requires a public hearing before trees are removed or rock walls are changed and other scenic features. So, uh, I'm gonna open the public hearing. Ask if there is a presentation, Nate, if you have a presentation. I'd like to also hear from the staff. And I guess I can share my screen if you'll hold on a second. I could pull up you unless you would like, no, I will, I will do this because. Um, we have a, a table and I'm not sure who was prepared by. But a table of the trees, uh, in question. Including a column of recommendations from the Conservation Commission, I believe if Kate were here, she would explain fully. But that's my understanding. Let me just get this open so I can share it. Alright, so I'm gonna stop, share. And then I'm going to. Okay, it's difficult to read. Um, I'm going to see if maybe I can. A change so that you can. So I, I am not sure that I can make this.
It looks fine. It looks fine on my screen.
It does look okay on your screen. Good.
Yes.
I just.
Yeah, I can see it as well.
So you can see that what we have done is taken this table and it's been broken out into. Board members who were assigned to take a look at these trees. And I'm, I must say, I don't know who prepared this, but trying to identify which tree on Grapevine Road I was looking at was not that easy. Because the house numbers didn't seem to match up to any house number that had a tree in front of it with a. White. Uh, notice on it, so. I'm not quite sure whose table this is, but it was, it was difficult for me anyway. I appreciate the detail, however. And I wonder if you want to walk through this for us and then we can ask you some questions, Nate.
Sure, I can walk through it. So the, the way that the table is organized, it was difficult because some of the. Properties were just listed as ninety one, for example, was the iron. Uh, rail soccer fields, which was a long property that extended many pole spans and each of the. The trees listed should have been within those spans. Every pole along the Grapevine Road has a labeling number as well. So I had initially tagged forty trees that were shade trees or. Within the municipal boundaries of the soccer fields. And I, on February, in the middle of February, on the sixteenth, I went out with Kate Winslow and we had discussed. Leaving nine of the trees that I had marked just for purposes of, uh, their preferences of. You know, lack of defects, didn't think they were as significant risks to the lines as some of the other ones. And leaving a couple within wetland jurisdictions as well. Um, I had a meeting two weeks ago with the Wenham Conservation Commission and. The trees that we had agreed to have for removal were in agreement to be removed as well. Not sure if it's easier for me to just talk about each tree starting from the top or how you'd like me to proceed there.
Uh, I would like you to, um. As you're talking about the trees, can you identify? The, the, the reasons why you chose particular trees and not other trees? Is, is that a possibility? My, my sense when I was looking at this, oh, and the member Peter Clay has joined us. Thank you, Peter. Catherine, just so you know, um, Peter is here. I, I was, um. It seems as though to me anyway, and I'm eager to hear from. Um, when about this, but that some of the trees that were noted for removal really could be. You know, trimmed instead of completely removed. And I, and I also noticed that a cluster of dead pines and it wasn't in the area I was supposed to look at, but there was a cluster of dead pines on. Larch Row near the food project that were not signed, but were completely dead and in the right of way. So I was. Confused about why some trees were chosen and other trees were not, how the choices were made. So I wonder if you can. Talk to us about that as you're going through here, you know, how did you choose which trees? To, to flag and which trees. You've chosen not to flag.
Yeah, so I, in the defect condition column was my assessment or diagnosis of the trees. They all have various degrees of. Some of them have a percentage of dieback, which is leaves absent from the tree. Leaves are. You know, primarily feed the tree through photosynthesis and when there's a lack of leaves in the crown, then the tree is not able to. Feed itself and sustain itself as well.
Could I ask a question on, 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 on that? And maybe about out of order and you let me know when the appropriate question time is.
And Nate, are you comfortable taking questions during your presentation?
Uh, sure.
Okay, well, go ahead, Rick.
Well, my observation when I was looking at the trees, I had a hard time. It said crown dieback. I had a hard time figuring out with no leaves on the tree. What the percentage of dieback was, or. Was that significant to that tree? So is there a way you could have told that? Is there a way I could have figured that out when the trees are bare?
Yeah, so there is a. When trees are dormant in the winter, deciduous trees, uh, when their leaves fall, they do have buds that are visible on the tree. The buds are small and they don't look the exact same as leaves, but when there are buds present, they do open up. In the spring, just through years of looking at trees, I'm able to tell when there are buds on trees and when there are not buds on trees. So when I saw buds present, I counted, I assumed that that would be foliage that was there. When there were dead leads that. There were no buds present, I made the assumption that those are dead. So with those dead limbs on the tree, I use that as a inference to. You know, looking at the whole crown of a tree, taking a percentage, so say I saw like a tenth of the. Tree didn't have buds or had dead limbs or dead branches. That is what I consider dieback or crown decline.
So that's probably not something that a novice like us could have figured out.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. I was, didn't know what I was doing there. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, that's okay.
And can I just ask a, a, a couple of basic questions before we roll into this procedure? Um, I'm sorry, Nate, I missed your introduction. Are you with National Grid?
Yes, I am a certified arborist that is contracted with National Grid.
Okay.
Part of what this program is that I'm given a section of a circuit that is highlighted. Um, and this also might answer the question earlier of why I didn't look at dead pines near the food processing plant on Larch Row.
The food project, it's a, it's a field. It's okay.
Okay, uh, I don't know which address that is off the top of my head, but I wasn't looking at the entirety of Lark Row. The section where Grapevine Road, uh, meets the intersection of Lark Row from there up until the Hamilton border is where I did my survey. I'm not sure if that's where that plant is, um, but another thing that I take into consideration is. When I'm looking at tree failures, I'm taking into account targets. In this case, it is the three-phase primary wires. Located on the top of the utility poles and sometimes with that, that also can assume the roads and public sidewalks as well. But primarily, I'm looking at trees that could impact the three-phase primary lines.
So I'm gonna anticipate Mr. Pascarello's next question, which is to say, who did the, who looked at the other trees?
Uh, I, I'm not sure what you mean about the other trees. Uh, one of our. We have a program coordinator who highlights sections. Uh, I'm not exactly sure how they delineate. The boundaries or not, think it has to do with customer counts and failure rates on the circuits before. The fifty-one T two, which is a circuit, which was the circuit that I'm looking at, uh, extends through various towns, Wenham being one of them. Um, this was just the section that was highlighted, so those are the sections that I looked at.
So, um. So the, the sections that are, the trees that are here show on a Rubbley Road, Larch Row. Grapevine Road and Essex Street, and you're saying you were responsible for looking at all of these.
That is correct.
Okay, because what you just described didn't sound like that. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Dan, did you have another question?
I did, so, and this should be quick. The chart that I have does not have the second column where there are some notes that say leave. In them. So is that, can you just explain what is that column? Are those? Have those trees been determined, we're taking those off the list?
That's the Conservation Commission's. Recommendation.
Okay, and.
And that came from Kate Mallory earlier today when she said she could not be on the call because she's had a family emergency.
Alright, so what is, is National Grid still requesting to remove those or are the, are we just taking them off the request?
Uh, I am keeping those in my initial proposal because I still. Those trees as hazards. However, I've come to an agreement with Kate and Winslow that we will leave those trees be as a refusal. So I want them to still be on the list that is part in front of you, but the baseline that I'm going off of is that we will not perform any work on those nine trees.
And my last question, Ann, is. Nate, before you launch into a description of forty separate trees on an individual basis, is.
Sure.
Is there a way we can just, you can describe what the process was? I assume that you've met with. When and, um, you're requesting that we approve the removal of all these trees and is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's fair to say.
And so, and is there a way you think we can? Maybe have, I don't know, Nate, give an overview and then hear from when before we do an individual tree by tree breakdown?
I just want to preempt this by saying that, uh, I'm, I've met with Nick numerous times. Uh, Kate and I went out on our own numerous times also, and we walked the whole. Uh, area with Nick, um. And discussed really each tree individually. Um, and then given the list to you guys to go through them, so. Uh, and I'm very confident, uh, very pleased with the, in dealing with Nick and National Grid, uh, as, you know. He being the representative, so. I mean, if that helps. To kind of preempt, uh, him trying to discuss removal of forty trees individually.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, I don't, I'm not sure that was really what I was trying to suggest. I was more. Um, asking generally, um, what the basis was for determining that each of these needed to be. Fully removed as opposed to. Pruned back or had the, 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 is, is there some? Metric or some, uh, standard that you use for determining when a tree goes completely versus when you simply. Cut it back so that it's not a, an issue and of these trees, were there any that could have been? Rather than tagged for complete removal. Tagged for pruning back and shaping or something like that?
Um, I think, oh, go ahead, Nick.
Oh, okay, um, I was gonna start out by saying with this program with hazard tree removal, we. Look more specifically at removals. There were a couple of trees that I identified not. In the town list, but some private trees that I had listed as just a pruning or a trimming. Um, that is something that is a skill that we look at and with our program. We mostly look at removals because there is also district arborists in the North Shore. They do a lot of the prune, maintain, uh, maintain. Routine pruning cycles about every five to seven years. Um, so they're responsible more from the trimming, so they'll. If there's just a limb that's going towards the line, but a healthy tree, otherwise they usually take care of that. Our program almost looks at hotspots. Of high, of circuits that have high failure rate. The fifty-one T two is one of the worst performing circuits. So in order to ensure that it stays up and provides reliable electricity. This is a program that is designed to target some removals of those hazard trees that. The district, North Shore District Foresters aren't going to be able to tackle on their routine trimmings.
And just to be clear for people on the call, when you talk about circuit fifty-one T two, you mean the elect. The, the distribution. Lines that are contained within that circuit and that may go out, that, that may cause power outages if a tree falls on. Those lines, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And also one note that I want to say is. I have called, when I'm looking at these trees as a hazard, I don't necessarily say that they're going to fall on like a calm day like today. I'm more specifically looking at intense storm situations. Um, for example, last October, we had that storm that. Uh, infected the South Shore more than the North Shore, but lots of trees that. You know, had foliage cover but had cavities with or other defects that weren't necessarily visible. They collapsed and they caused a lot of power outages and it took, you know, five or six days for some homes to be able to restore their power. Just because there was a sheer volume of trees and electrical outages that with, with our limited resources, still took time to restore that power. And when I'm looking at these hazards, it's something I want to avoid a situation like that when there is intense storms.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Clay.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Nick a question. So. Driving down Grapevine, you know, from Larch. And then the closer you got to Gordon College, it seemed like you'd already removed, done a lot of a tree removal work. Um, as you got closer to Gordon College and you were just like. Um, finishing the job as you moved, I guess, um. Northwest. Is that?
There were some trees that I had looked at, uh, near that section of Gordon College, but they were being removed. Outside of the permissioning and that was not the hazard tree program that removed them. Uh, I'm not sure if that was. North Shore Arborist or if that was someone else who decided to remove those, but that was not with our direct program. Earlier, I had also mentioned that there was a delineation in the circuits and there was a cutoff. Near that woodlot approaching the entrance to Gordon College. I don't remember the exact pole number that it stopped at the top of my head, um, but I think it was. It was past the, uh, some of those cul-de-sacs on the right, like I think Charles Davis Road was one of them.
Right, well, because it actually doesn't look very good. So I'm glad to hear you actually didn't do it.
Hey, I wanted to, to probe on that question as well because one of the other things I noticed when I was doing my survey was. There are a couple of trees that are in the right of way that are under power lines that look like they were lopped off mid trunk and left. And I wondered if that was the National Grid tree removal folk who did that or someone else that it's very unsightly. So I would want to ask that if these trees are removed, they're removed to the ground? And not west.
For, for each of these removals. Uh, in their proposal, we are looking to remove them to a stump as close to the grade as possible. So I'm not looking at lopping off one side of a tree necessarily. That's why we're targeting full removals down to a stump. Say about ten inches or less to the grade.
Um, I see that members of the public have their hands up, but I, I want to go through the members of the board before we take, um, public comment. And I want to make sure you're finished with your presentation before we have a chance to do that. Um, I had one other, one other thought, one of the trees, and I'm not sure if it was my tree or someone else's tree, because as I said. Would have been very, very handy to have a map associated with this table. I found this table very difficult to, to work with. I couldn't figure out which tree was which. Um, so I looked at all of them on Grapevine Road just because I couldn't figure out which ones were mine and which ones were the people's. Anyway. There's one that has a sign on it that's right on the iron rail. Field on the right of way and it's growing through the scenic rock wall. So, and it, 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 it appeared to me to be fully dead, but I, again, could not identify which tree it was, so I couldn't see what. Which, what you said about it. Um, do you know the tree I'm talking about? It's right where.
That was my tree, Ann.
It was your tree?
That was my tree. It's number fourteen. It's the oak.
Okay.
So, yeah, I looked at that as well. It's dead, I think.
And I wanted to ask, okay, suppose you took that down. That, that's quite a landmark, that tree, for people and, and I'm wondering. Suppose you took that down, where would you take it down to? The rock wall? Would it affect the rock wall?
It would be as, uh, close to the rock wall as safely possible. Kate had also mentioned to me, um. That I think it was the Wenham Arts Center or Wenham Museum was interested in having that tree cut below the lines. Uh, into, I'm calling it a statue, but essentially it would be a couple, couple of feet up from the stone wall and they were looking at. Turning that into an art project. I didn't get confirmation directly from her that she wanted to do that, but that was something. That she had mentioned to me in email and I feel like I should bring up in this meeting right now.
Well, I mean, to insert my perspective on this. Is that I think we ended up getting an email from a resident in town that, uh, there was a nesting. Um, raccoon family in there, so I think she wanted to bring that down. To a certain height and then turn it into an art installation, obviously, uh, after the raccoons had left the tree, so. Just to put that out there, because it's probably, somebody probably is gonna have a question very shortly about that.
Oh, thank you. That's helpful. Is there anything else we should know of that nature?
Nothing that's come across my board. I don't know about Nate, though.
Yeah, that's the only one that's come up on my end and we can, you know, uh, the raccoon nesting period, I think is about eight weeks from the middle of March. So that is one that we can try to put off for last to give the babies time to leave the nest.
So that's, that anticipates my next question, which is suppose we approve this tonight. Um, what's your timing? You know, when would all this occur? Um, and it sounds like almost immediately.
Uh, I don't have the exact start date. We were looking to see if these trees were approved, but I imagine it would. Uh, when it would start would be a couple of weeks. You know, I, about one or two weeks is my guess until the work would start. I know that there are the tree crews that are going to be performing this work are finishing up another project in Topsfield at the moment. Uh, I don't have that exact timeline. I wasn't responsible for the planning of that project. So my understanding is when they're wrapped up in Topsfield is when they'll be transitioning into Wenham.
When you, when you do something like this, do you talk to the Wenham Police?
About, yes, for, for, usually for these trees, they are going to need a detail, so. Um, when I started my planning process, I did check in with the Wenham Police. And I let them know that I was going to be doing work in town planning, so they knew. About my presence and they're expecting when the trees are going to be removed, that they'll be, you know, called upon to do a detail.
Right.
Does any other board member have a question for Nate or when?
Uh, the only thing I'm gonna say to preempt that is, um, that even though the Wenham Police are notified. Uh, as tree warden, I am not, so I, I end up finding out. When residents either start to call into Sheila to complain or I'm driving by and seeing the work done, so I would actually request that maybe. I'm notified too of when this is all happening, so I can just be out there or at least aware of the timeline. If that makes sense.
It does. Nate, what can you offer there?
I can check with my supervisor, uh, and as, once I, he gets a better idea of the timeline that they're wrapping up in Topsfield. Uh, I can be notified and tell when as well. So when I know all four of that information along to him.
So, so you can commit to letting win know when this project's going to be happening?
Yeah, I can try to give the best heads up that I can.
Yep.
And we'll let, and, and, and when you let Margaret know, I'll write Margaret a note too. Um.
Okay.
David Anderson has a hand up.
Thanks, I, I have a question about, um, a general question about my technical review or the review that I did today. Can I ask it now or are we waiting on those types of questions?
Taking, I'm definitely taking comments from board members and then I would like to take comments from the public.
Okay, so, um, I'm twenty-five, tree number twenty-five through thirty-two. I don't know if you want to scroll down. I'm curious to know if any of those are on the remove list.
Oh, I see.
Twenty.
Yes. We are going to leave.
Okay. Yeah, so that's good because these were the ones I was actually curious about. These are all pine. And I, I just will ask the question as briefly as possible. I get the point about. Crown dieback, they're top-heavy, they have the co-dominant leads. On the co-dominant leads, where you have something that, uh, you know, really is like five feet off the ground going up to eighty feet or. Sixty feet, whatever it is, and you have a real split and they both, but they both look healthy. I mean, these are magnificent trees. We all agree, right? They're magnificent trees, these pines, but I get the point that. A magnificent tree split in two could pose the hazard. Is it possible? To flip a coin and pick one of the co-dominants and cut that but leave the other? Or is that just not feasible from a? Technical perspective. That's my only question. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start by talking about, uh, co-dominant leads, especially on pine trees are. Ones that raise red flags for me. Um, when I had gone out with when. I had looked at being more aggressive with most of those pines and removing those. But we had, there was two clusters of pines, uh, one was about five pines and the other, I think, was six pines. And talking with Win and Kate, we had decided on the worst of the two trees from each cluster, so that would be four trees out of the two clusters total. Um, when I was talking about most of these trees as hazards, I'm perceiving that they're going to collect, like. Fall or split apart in storm scenarios. Pine trees are meant to just have one stem going straight up. They call it X current and. Means going straight up and down. When pines kind of get wiggly and have. An unusual habits, habits, so say like a curve or when you get the multiple leaders. That's an irregular form that they can be more susceptible to breaking. When you have the two leads together, that can be a source of decay that I'm not able to look at from the outside. Um, I don't have the tools that could look at that either, so that is an inference that I'm making based on. Various storm work I've seen where I've seen co-dominant pines split apart. Sure, one could fall the opposite direction or one could fall the direction towards the wires. Um, while making a large cut like that, say, removing just one leader from them. That is something that we try to avoid because whenever you are making a cut on a tree, even with pruning, there is a risk that it. Poses as an entryway for dick, um, fungus or bacteria or insects to get into the tree and accelerate the decline of it. So with our work. We propose the removal instead of leaving that risk of removing the front leader because then. The snag that's standing could just fall back into the wetlands as well.
Thanks, that's, that's helpful information.
And there's one more question related, and I don't know if there's anyone on the call who can answer it because Kate is not here, but. In the concom column, there's this S B W B marking. Does, does that have any meaning for you? Um, when, do you know what that means? Is it Salem Beverly Water Board?
I think that is. I had permissioned some of these trees from the Salem Beverly. I think that is. I had permission, some of these trees from the Salem Beverly Water Board. And I have a signed paperwork approving the removal of those trees from, from them. But in addition to getting their permission, they're also brought in front of the board as well. So we need to, the two sign-offs for any work to be done.
So I think they hold kind of a large portion from, um, the Notre Dame School across the street from there and that whole section. So, yeah.
That's what those are. Thank you. And I have, Mr. Woodland has his hand up. Rick, you're muted. You're muted.
Sorry, thank, thank you for recognizing me. Um, I'm the new member at the bottom there. And, uh, I really didn't have a problem with this, but my, my question for either, for when probably is, if, um, a resident is concerned with the removal of the tree, is there some way, um, their upsetness can be mitigated by, uh, planting a new tree that's safely away from the power?
Uh, there was, oh, go ahead, Nate.
Okay, I was just gonna cut in that there is a DCR program, um, that has a fifty-fifty match, uh, with National Grid being one of the fifty percent and the town of Wyndham being the other. With the approval of the other trees, uh, excluding the nine that we are going to leave, so the, the thirty-one other trees, we can come up with some agreement after for a planting project to plant them away from the power lines or in other highlighted sections that when our Kate might want them in. I don't have, uh, the exact details. There's a DCR link to it. Uh, I'm not sure how I could share that in here. But, uh, I'd say that program is what we would be using as a replanting.
Yeah, I think, uh, oh, sorry, to reinforce that, I think, uh, it's probably something Kate's more in tune with. Uh, you know, she's very, uh, with the meetings that we've had, she was very aggressive about, uh, you know, saving and protecting and, uh, the trees and trying to get, uh, for lack of a better term, remuneration for the tree removals. But, uh, that and then also, uh, Rich Souza, the new, uh, DPW Director, uh, kind of the three of us have been in conversation about, um, you know, the planting of new trees, and I was actually able to get some of my budget, uh, before everything was frozen, uh, to put into new plantings. So, um, we have about nine new trees that we have access to. Uh, probably in the next month or so. So, yeah, that's something we're always looking, looking toward and focusing on. But I mean, if anybody has any concerns, please have them call Town Hall and, uh, you know, talk with Sheila and we'll get people on the board. I'm very happy to talk with people about new trees, proper planting and, uh, better locations than we've been doing in the past, and hopefully we can work with National Grid and DCR a little more on this topic.
I would, I would ask that you, um, have, once this project is underway and your guys are all engaged in trying to do some replanting, that you come back and tell the board, this board, um, and maybe Concom too, if they want to hear about it, maybe you could do it together. You know, sort of what the, what that project looks like and where those are going and so forth. I'd be interested in that. Um, other board members have questions for when or Nate at this point?
Just a quick question for when. I, I think it's for when. When in the category of trees where it says pine, does that include large trees and does it matter? If, if it does.
Is there any difference? I don't think there were any, I mean, just off the top of my head, I'm trying to scroll through the list. I apologize for not putting myself on video. It's, uh, the, I don't think there were any large trees for removal, or you mean large row?
No, I meant large, I meant large. I didn't know if that was considered a subcategory of pine trees on, on the list or not. I, I don't know if it matters, just.
I don't think so much with those. I mean, a lot of the stuff, uh, you know, Nate was talking about co-dominant stems, uh, and structure, that really the white pines are affected by a, uh, pine tip shoot moss, which causes that sort of, uh, not sort of, but, uh, that co-dominant, uh, leader, larges are not affected by that. And, uh, they're deciduous, so they drop their needles, uh, prior to the winter and blah, blah, blah. So that's all I'm gonna say.
So if it's a pine here, it's definitely not deciduous.
Correct.
So, Anne, just a process question, question, are we going to go through the blocks of trees per member and then take questions if there aren't any? I mean, how are we going to proceed?
Uh, I am open to suggestions from the board about how it wishes to proceed. I do not feel like I need to go through the block of mine. In part, because I looked at all of Grapevine Road, and I think I've had my questions answered, but, um, others may want to ask something about specific trees, I would.
I, I was just gonna suggest that we go through the blocks as assigned, and if we have comments or questions about them, point out those particular things and then move along.
But that's completely fine. Do you, do you want to? I don't know who came after me. I feel like I have had my say at this point, so. Uh, you, you appear to be the next.
Yeah, all right. So I think I'm after you. So we talked about tree fourteen, which is the oak, already, which is growing through the wall. The only question I had um, about these trees, about possibly saying it's number twelve, which is a maple. It's, I think it's actually on the soccer field. And it's, um, it's behind one of the benches. It, it looked like it was, um, o- okay. So of my eight trees, that, that was one I had a question about, and then a comment about tree fifteen, which is in the iron rail entrance. I think it's in the island, the circular island. It is, um, it is one, it's a pretty big tree. But if it's, you know, hollow inside, I could see why you'd want to take that down. So those are the only comments I had about my eight trees.
Thanks. Is there Nate or when do you have any response? I can hear you, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll start by addressing that, uh, that first maple tree that was near the bench in the soccer fields. When I looked at that one, uh, when I had indicated earlier, it is correct that in the winter, there are no leaves on the tree, so I am looking for buds, which are, which lay dormant in the winter and show that they will bloom when springtime comes around. And with that tree, I saw, I anticipated there was about forty-five percent dieback, so nearly half of the crown of the tree did not have visible buds or healthy-looking buds, so I did not think that they were going to blo- bloom. There were also prune cuts on the tree that looked like there was decay or rot. Um, so that was one that I had looked at targeting. There was another larger maple, uh, in a similar place, like a couple poles down. I had decided to leave that because I thought it had a full crown. No senses of decay from the prune cuts, and I deemed that one healthy, was also a larger tree, so I thought that would provide more value to the soccer fields, but sugar maples also have a pretty definite lifespan as well. And once they start to decline, they don't, it's harder for them to bounce back. And with this one having about forty-five percent of the crown declining and some decay at the prune cuts, it raised my red flags and why I was looking to remove that one.
So my question with that, Nate, is it, it didn't seem like it was tall enough to be a threat to the wire. I may not, not be remembering it correctly, but um, the other issue with that is there's not a ton of shade on that soccer field. Um, if I'm remembering correctly from years ago, and if, if that is gonna throw, especially on the bench area there, that, that field can get pretty hot in the, in the daytime on games or. So that, that was my only question about potentially possibly leaving, uh, one of the trees.
Uh, I mean, just to insert my opinion, the, which is a little different from Nick's, is uh, even agreeing with the, his, uh, the, the removal of those trees due to the fact that even even if they had seventy to sixty percent, uh, life in them, the proximity to the sports field, and like you said, the benches, uh, it's way too much of a concern, especially with the increased activity level on those sports fields now that we're getting into the season. Uh, but also that we, which wasn't on this list that was provided to, uh, you board members, uh, is that, uh, we are designating, I think, out of the nine to twelve trees that I was able to secure with, uh, you know, the end of, uh, January's budget, that we were going to plant some more trees along that, uh, stone wall, uh, to provide that shade and more um, aesthetic appeal, you know, because of such the visibility of that whole spot with the intersections and everything else. So, uh, and I think they were going to be plain trees, uh, platinous, um, if that helps, but so.
So when do you think that that tree number twelve was a safety issue?
I think it's a, I think it's more of a safety issue due to the fact that, uh, its proximity to, between the stone wall and the sports fields and the benches, uh, and the increased activity level, and it's something that, again, uh, I mean, I don't want to belabor the point, but I don't have a lot of money. So I think if we can rely on National Grid to kind of, uh, help us out a little bit in this case, and then, uh, you know, with the money that we've already spent on new trees and then relying on the DPW to, uh, do the installation, I think we can kind of be a little more proactive and not, you know, uh, I, I just, I, I don't want any concerns, especially with kids playing sports. So, uh, I think it's something we have to deal with now.
Okay, that's all I had, Mike.
Okay. Yep.
All right. And then if I'm moving down, I see Mr. Clay, did you have any more to say about any of these that you looked at?
Well, actually, I'm kind of happy to see that um, five trees are being left.
Okay. And then.
And, and I will also say this, Anne, because I think you alluded to it earlier. When you look at, um, column G, which is the telephone poles.
Yeah.
I couldn't find any of those numbers.
No, no, we need a map. Next time you do this.
It really, I, I was so lost, but I was looking at trees kind of going. So I'm, I'm just going to be, assume we should all be happy that they saved five of the, uh, nine or eight.
And then, um, David, did you have, uh, more on your trees? Twenty-five to thirty-two, I think you've already asked some, but did you have other questions?
Excuse me. I'm, um, the only one that was interesting to me is the twenty-six. I imagine that, um, they, I think Nate alluded to this earlier, that the consideration around cutting trees is partially determined by the risk to the power lines or what, what, you know, how close it is, what's at stake, right? I mean, that's why we're talking about these specific transmission lines. That twenty-six and twenty-five, I think both sit on top of the lines that go to the town's DPW, which I think is a significant place that we don't want power to be lost. They may have backup generators. I don't know. I still thought those trees looked like they were in pretty good shape, even with the dieback. Um, so if they, if it's going to stay, it's going to stay, but I did recognize the practical danger of those trees, um, to the town's operations. That's just kind of a comment. The other is, um, just a really brief kind of one liner, Nate, you know, from doing this work and what we saw. I mean, what's, what's, and maybe this also, um, is a general question. What's this, what's, what's your overall impression? Again, really brief about the health of the trees on these town roads. I mean, do they look pretty healthy? Are we really struggling with some dieback on these roads in terms of these trees?
Okay, I, uh, I'll start with the dressing. Uh, those two trees, twenty-five and twenty-six, they, there is a portion of the line along Grapevine Road that does feed into the town DPW. Uh, those two trees were in close proximity. Tree twenty-six, uh, the fifteen-inch pine, that was one that I agreed with when Kate to leave, and we would not perform any work on. Uh, tree twenty-five was also a twenty-five inch DBH tree. The co-dominant leads on that one had a more poor habit, and by habit, I mean, when I was talking earlier about pine trees being straight up and down X current, poor habit means less like that ideal ha- uh, that ideal structure that I was alluding to. So when I was with when, we had put our heads together and said, came up with the two trees that we thought looked the worst of those groups of pines. As for the other trees in different sections, there's not exactly a cookie cutter answer, and that's why I had included the descriptions. Some of them had cavities, similar to when you go to the dentist and you have a cavity in your teeth. There can also be cavities in trees where it's an entryway for decay that will, you know, will only really get worse in time. There's not, there's not a really good way to help with cavities. You, there's an outdated thought that you could fill it, but data has shown the tree biology that that does not help the tree and could in fact have an inverse relationship on it and could decline the tree's health. So that is a practice that we do not recommend. Pine trees also in storm situations, they break frequently. When we're going out in storms, pine trees are one of the number one culprits of what we're seeing, especially those co-dominant ones where you have more than one leader coming from the same union. So that was something we looked at. I know that there was a couple of ash trees on this list as well. Ash trees are another target of ours because there's an invasive insect, the emerald ash borer, that is making its way across the state. It's turned into a matter of when it's going to get to ashes rather than if. And the way that the insect burrows into the tree just causes the tree to die, and there's no turning back. Alluding back to something else we had talked about of the, the maple tree near the soccer fields, um, one thing we look at is right tree for the right place, and what that means is I'm all for having healthy trees, but when they start showing signs of decline near power lines, there comes a time where it's a tough question, but we can remove that just to eliminate this risk, because I am here to talk about the power lines, but that's not to say that the tree could fail and be across the sidewalk or be across the road, and that's something the town would need to clean up in a storm situation.
Well, that was my question earlier about the pine trees near, um, uh, on Large Row near the, uh, it's basically across the street from Enon Village, um. I don't know that they necessarily threaten the power lines, but they're certainly dead, and they're certainly in the right of way, and I was, that was why I was wondering why they were not being removed. But it sounds like you are focused singularly on avoiding power line problems with this list. Can I keep going down here? And, and Rick, do you have other questions about any of the trees you looked at?
No, I did have a comment, though, uh, about not having money for trees. Uh, I don't know if it's included, but I think that when you might, I don't know, I'm not expert, but might be able to talk to the people in the C- Community Preservation Act to see if they can help you fund trees as a way to maintain the beauty of these roads as we have to cut things down. It was just, just an idea, but, uh, they are open to those kind of suggestions, um.
Oh, oh, I mean, I agree with you. I've had those discussions, uh, but they, the funds are only available in the Historic District Commission. Uh, I do have maps given to me by, uh, Wyndodge. Um, that Alby, you know, that he got from, uh, his dad, Alby, uh, that I've been going over, but, uh, you know, that, yeah, that'd be great, but I think it's all got to be on Main Street or um, qualified to that extent. But, yeah, good point.
So not on these scenic roads then. And when, while you have your microphone open, can I ask you to answer the general question that I think uh, Peter Clay put, which is the, a general sense of the health of the trees along the streets and along these, you know, scenic roads in Wyndham?
Oh, yeah, I think it's every, every road in Wyndham, and again, in the Commonwealth is just being uh, pushed even farther, uh, with, uh, increased usage of salt, uh, environmental pressures. And, uh, you know, in the past, we've used, uh, not, not, not to keep on blah, blah, blah. But, uh, you know, we've used a lot of sugar maples, we've used a lot of trees. But uh you know, we've used a lot of sugar maples, we've used a lot of trees that have not been placed properly. That are not uh that are not going to be tolerant of future conditions, so that's why um I think. Out of the nine to twelve trees that were purchased, we bought uh a third of them were. Again, the uh the native plane trees, which uh has an exfoliating bark. Uh so every year, just like the leaves, that bark falls off the tree, it. Drops all the contaminants that have been accumulated on it for the whole year. And it tries to start fresh, so we're trying to get a lot more, not a lot more smarter or more intelligent. Or planning, you know, like right, right plant, right place, so I I mean, we're under pressure, so. Yeah, we just have to get a little more creative and try and be a little more proactive instead of reactive.
Right, and I know with climate change as well, some of these trees feel the stress of that.
Oh, definitely, the sugar, like like Nate said, the sugar maples are, I mean, they're the canary in the coal mine. And those are the trees that are right along the uh the iron rail uh fields and they're showing it, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
If there's no other questions from board members, can I think it, I'm gonna.
I would just said I was okay. Yeah, this is just, I don't, wait, I don't know if you know the answer to this, this might be a Margaret question, but do we have a list of the roads designated as scenic roads? In town?
Oh, we do, that's uh, why don't we, I've actually asked Sheila this a couple of times and she has a very accessible list. Uh so if she, I'll shoot her an email now and she'll get it tomorrow morning and maybe have that sent out to, but Margaret should have it too and. I mean, Kate will have it, but Kate's tied up.
I know that everything on this chart is designated because otherwise it wouldn't be before us, but it would be helpful just to know what the.
I think, I think in addition, it's portions of ninety-seven, it's Cedar Street, it's Walnut.
Maple and cherry.
Yeah, maple and cherry, it's anything with a stone wall.
Uh I don't know about anything with the stone wall, but there is a definitive list. And actually, while I'm still on microphone, I'd almost uh challenge everybody, maybe we should all go out for a walk around. At some point so that we're not, uh we can look at trees that have, that are in Bud. Uh and we can just talk about general health concerns about trees, I mean, because this is becoming more. The discussion about this is becoming more and more prevalent.
This seems like a a great thing to do as part of our long-range planning process, honestly, once we get that going.
Yep.
So the, I'm gonna make a note of it, talk to Margaret, let's get it going, I think that's a good idea. If there are no other questions from board members, can I turn it over to the very patient members of the public who have been waiting with their hands up? Um I see, and I'm not sure I'm seeing everybody because I have you, I have you sort of on a minimal grid because I have my screen shared, but. It looks like Michelle Bailey and Lucas Fisk are here as members of the public, Ms. Bailey, do you want to go and just introduce yourself? Give your, give your address for the record because we're being recorded and ask your question.
Yep, Michelle Bailey to Remington Road, um some of my question has been discussed, but several of these trees are on the. Iron Rail property and I had not seen that the Iron Rail Commission had been given the opportunity to. Way in on this, I was curious if that had happened, and then my second concern is about the tree that's in the wall. I know the Iron Rail, um you know, spent a significant amount of money improving their sign and repairing that wall recently. And I'm concerned about the removal of that tree affecting either the way that wall works, the integrity of the wall. Um being damaged through the removal process um and the like, so that's my question.
Thanks, I don't know the answer on Iron Rail, um and we don't have a staff person here um to answer it, so I got to apologize for that. When do you know whether Iron Rail was consulted? Calling the plant god.
Yep, okay, summon, summon the plant god. My microphone works, the uh I do not know about the Iron Rail Commission and that's a great question, the, I just know. Uh and I can't answer to that, but I can answer to the uh integrity of the wall with regards to that oak tree. Where the wall is not a retaining structure and uh. Uh I mean, they can, they can, they will not be able to grind the stump of that oak down to the ground. Due to the fact that the way it's growing into the wall, so uh whatever method is chosen, chosen. That oak is gonna have to be left at a certain height um to accommodate the raccoon, to accommodate an art structure. I and it, I don't think it impedes any view of the signage uh. And it, it definitely will not impede, I mean, the, I don't think you'd lose any aesthetic value. Uh or would have to change anything, the the wall is actually in very good shape and. It would just show as a stump growing up through the wall, so uh.
Yeah, that's it, if I might, I would just recommend that before trees are removed, that there. The planning board request the Iron Rail Commission have an opportunity to discuss this, I know it has not been on an agenda meeting for them.
You know it hasn't, because we, we, this would have been a staff question, what, who the staff referred it to, apparently that. Concon was referred to the Concon, so.
So, wh- which is good because many of those trees are clearly in wetland areas, so.
Yeah. And then I I see, want to recognize Lucas Fisk. If you're still there and I appreciate your patience.
Yes, hello. Lucas Fisk, uh Forestry Supervisor for National Grid Hazard Tree Program, uh so Nate Supervisor, I just wanted to answer a couple of questions that had come up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were here as a member of the public, sorry about that.
Oh, no, no worries at all, um as far as timing, uh if the project is approved um from you guys. We're looking at starting to cut trees in Wenham in approximately two to three weeks and we will. Definitely contact when prior to coming into town to let them know which day we will be around. And then the uh second comment I had uh was for you, Anne, as far as the dead pines on Large Row um that you were concerned about. They are on an adjacent circuit, uh so we weren't even looking at trees on that circuit over there, we were focused on the fifty-one T two circuit. Now, the other circuit was the fifty-one L three.
Well, it it's, but as I said, and and I'm gonna make this request to you, Mister Fisk. Next time you present a table like this to us, I presume this is your table, we would like a map to go with it so that we can see what we're looking at. I really appreciate that.
Yep, understood, I've taken the notes and I have the note, or need a map for trees for the next meeting.
Yeah, just just so we can, that next time, because I think you do this periodically, ha- at, is is there a a. Sort of every two-year kind of rota on these, or is it every so many years per circuit, or how does that work?
Uh we work, the, this Hazard Tree Program works the forty worst performing circuits that National Grid has in mass electric territory. Um so unfortunately, the fifty-one T two is a habitual offender um and has been performing poorly. And we've, this is now the third time we've done this project in approximately twelve years out there.
Okay, so it's it, it it's not, it's not a regular periodicity, it's, you know, you're focused on the worst performers and you. Just come when you need to come, is that what you're saying? Just so I just want to understand, yeah, okay. Is there anyone else from the public who would wish to speak, um if so, open your microphone because it's difficult for me. To see uh everyone at once with my screen being shared. I don't see anyone else there when I scroll through, um. If not, I wonder if it's appropriate to uh take a motion to close this public hearing.
Uh this is uh Peter Clay, I motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Second by uh Rick Woodland.
Okay, um.
Wait, adjourn the meeting or the hearing?
The hearing.
You mean, close the hearing, right, Peter?
Close the hearing, that's what I.
I, I meant hearing, please, sorry.
You may have meant meeting, but it's the hearing, close and then we can take a vote.
No, man, I thought Peter was, I thought Peter was saying, I'm done, just shut it down.
Plant, plant god absolves you of all your sins.
We appreciate that.
I'll second the motion to uh close the public hearing.
Okay, and then if there's, and then uh having heard from the public and had. Quite a bit of discussion amongst the board members, I wonder if I can take a motion to, and let's see how to formulate this. Will one of you move to accept the list as amended from National Grid?
I, I think we might want a a little bit of discussion, yeah.
Do we need more discussion?
Well, just with respect to the oak tree, I've heard a couple of different requests out there and we should probably address. How we want to address that.
This is the oak tree on Grapevine that is growing through the um rock wall that you're referring to, tree number.
Right.
And that would be tree number, what?
Uh it's, I think it's tree fourteen, so, you know, what I've heard is. Are are we gonna leave it a certain height to allow for possible art projects, is it gonna be taken down to the wall? Uh is is there gonna be some kind of delay because of either raccoons or uh iron rail issues? Um I just looked on the town website, I don't think the Iron Rail Commission meets until the first Monday of each month, so. With this time, I I I mean, I think we need to make a decision about that tree tonight.
Can we leave it as uh final confirmation with Kate and when?
Bye.
Final confirmation as to.
Of what needs to be done with that one tree uh with Kate and when, I mean, we've talked about it, I mean, she and I. Again, walked around with uh Nate, um I mean, to each individual tree and discussed uh. Really a lot of issues, uh I mean, and then she's in charge of, or you know, with the email with the resident. And trying to keep the raccoons in the tree, so it'll keep them uh, you know, let the babies come out. And then I'm really not sure about the art installation, so I think, that's what I mean about kind of leaving it. I hate to say it, sort of up in the air, but leaving the final determination with Kate and when uh. About this one tree, I mean, I, we're not gonna take it down all the way, I can guarantee that uh. And she's, you know, she's pretty rabid about to, as well she should be, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it's quite a beautiful tree, even if it's mostly dead, Catherine, did you have your hand up? Yes.
I do, you've just closed your public hearing and you're not gonna be able to take input from anybody else.
I think we could take input from, I think we could direct the staff to decide the fate of this tree.
Well, you, the, you've noted that the Iron Rail Commission hasn't even seen this list or opined on anything, but it's.
Well, if we want the Iron Rail Commission to do that, then you're right, we'd have to reopen.
I mean, I think we can still hear from when as the tree warden, can't we?
I think so. I'm just, um, I'll leave that with you.
Okay. So my understanding when is that the the, the advantage of this is that National Grid is putting the bill for the removal of trees that you want to have removed.
I think uh, I mean, I, National Grid is correct, for lack of a better phrase, yep. That we've deemed to be uh a safety concern for. Residents of town, you know, uh I mean, confirmed by Kate Mallory, sort of a, another objective opinion. Uh besides my own, yep.
So, I mean, I, we can certainly make a motion and to leave it to the tree warden's discretion as to what height to remove the tree. Uh but, or or exclude it from the list.
Yeah, or excluded from the list, which is another option at this time anyway.
My only concern with that, oh, sorry, go ahead. My only concern is if we leave half a tree or ten feet of a tree, are we just kind of kicking the can down the road and eventually. It'll need to be removed anyway, I mean, I know there's talk about art project, I'm all for art projects, trust me, but. Well, how are we gonna follow this to make sure that that stump itself doesn't become a hazard? And if this is the time now to ask National Grid to remove it all the way into the dirt and repair the wall. Is this the time that we do that and, or or we're losing our right to to suggest that happen later? Uh I mean, to interject on a couple of points, uh the tree is growing up through the wall, so there's gonna be no removal. Uh and grinding of the stump. Yeah, they're just not, I mean, nope, I don't think you're getting any tree company to, yeah, I mean, they're just not gonna put their grinders into that. Uh I think it just has to be dealt with uh in such a fashion that we're. We're dealing with raccoons, uh I mean, we've got the safety concern because it's so close to the. It's closer to the parking that's behind the um the food hut.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and again, it's, we're talking about, I I don't, I'm trying to look at the list, I'm working off my phone. But I mean, the tree is showing such a larger percentage of decline that it brings it into that realm of. Let's get the the concern removed on National Grid's bill, sorry, Nate. I'm asking, I'm asking if they should take the wall down, take the whole tree out and rebuild it, you know, so.
They're not, they're not gonna do it, I mean, that's like asking them to, hey, I, I want one tree for every, I want two trees for every tree you're taking down.
If we don't explore it and we don't get in the notes that we did everything possible and in five years, we're back at this again, we have a trail.
Right, but I.
I also would like to say that, you know, leaving a stump of a tree, you know, if you, if you can take it all the way down to the wall. Okay, if leaving a ten-foot hunk of large oak tree. At that intersection right there, not the most beautiful thing, so. Um, uh what happens to this particular tree, I think is important because it is, even in death, a beautiful tree.
Um, what, I mean, I think even in death, it's, it's life, it's life for those, for that raccoon family. And that if we can get National Grid to take it, take a major portion of it down. Uh and allow those raccoons to, you know, get their kids and send them out into the world and then. Uh at some point in time, I will dedicate, you know, I mean, once the major portion of it is ta- is removed. Uh that it's a small cost uh on my budget that I can actually uh anticipate. To have a tree company come in when I have them doing work uh to remove the, that decaying trunk. That's been used for the family and get that out of the way, so I think uh Kate's idea of having a. Art installation, whether or not we agree with that as a, as a whole, but it's a, it's a discussion point. Um but I mean, let's, I really think we should consider letting National Grid do what they can up to a certain point. Based on that um uh house that the raccoon family made and that the concerned resident. Uh you know, brought to our attention, uh and then I'll deal with it next fiscal year. If that's okay with you guys.
I'm confused by what you're proposing, when, are you saying? Well, let me see if I understand this, we, if if we had a motion that said. We're gonna accept the recommendations to remove all of these trees with the exception of what Concon has in National Grid have agreed to leave.
Right.
And then we're talking about tree fourteen and we said. That tree not to be removed until the end of the removal process to give you sufficient time. And at a height to be determined in the discretion of the tree warden.
Or we can just say let, yeah, left up to the discretion of the tree, tree warden.
Working with Kate. Working with Kate.
Right. Is Kate? Concom, is that who Kate is? She's Kate, um, isn't she Concom and planning?
She's Concom and Open Space and Recreation. And I don't know if she works with iron rail or not. Um, I, I think by statute, this is given over to Concom and Planning Board to, to work on this.
Why is it?
Because some of them are in the, uh, are in wetland areas. Or open space.
I don't think the oak tree, well, I don't know.
That one is not.
That we're talking about is.
No, but it is on, it is on recreation land, it's easy open space.
I mean, it is, I mean, I don't wanna belabor the point, but is it, or I think that's well within my. Uh, jurisdiction due to the fact that it spans the stone wall. So I think primarily it's on mine. Yeah, so I mean, if you guys were able to give me that ability. With the caveat that, you know, I'm, I was talking with Kate about it anyway. You know, somebody, some town resident brought it to our attention, and I am wholeheartedly two thumbs up about letting a raccoon family. You know, live there and then move out, and then we take, we do what we can for the tree, so, yeah.
My, uh, if I could chime in for a second, my discussion with Kate was that.
Actually, Nate, I don't, I don't think you can.
No, this is a board discussion of, of the questions on the table, sorry. I was gonna say, one of my questions about the periodicity of this is, could you just leave that tree for now and come back in two years when you're back before us again? But that doesn't sound like something that we can count on, so.
Right, I mean, from my experience with National Grid, if we can deal with the majority of it now. And I, you know, we talked about, we, Kate and I talked about, uh, leaving, uh, pine tree snags. And they were, again, uh, without Nate, uh, you know, his backup. They were more than agreeable to do that. Who know, I don't know what happened with, uh, Kate and the Concom with that discussion, but I think we could have that same discussion. Uh, or push that issue on National Grid and just have them remove. You know, sort of the major portion of that tree to get it to a manageable level. Around the power lines, you know, coming out of Beverly and up to Gloucester, that it would reduce the level of concern for them. And then it's something, again, my budget, if I can, uh, anticipate it, that I can deal with over time. Uh, and we've already got the, sort of the pre-plant, the tree planting, uh. You know, on the interior of the wall, set up with the trees that we've already purchased, so.
So, so what do, what? What's not to like about where we are?
Who said that?
Peter Clay.
So we're talking about tree fourteen now, and do we want to, um. Sorry. Afraid you keep seeing my email come over. Do we, do, do you wanna formulate? Where we are into a motion?
Someone? Can I, I'm, I'm just curious on the budget side. When, if, if we don't include this, and you have to do it yourself, what is the cost for the town? And what, what, what are we talking about generally? If, if I can anticipate it and have it done depending on. You know, what's left and everything else, uh, and if I can anticipate it, uh, I might be able to get it done for nothing. I mean, worst case scenario, eight hundred dollars to remove a thirty to forty foot. Large trunk, uh, but I work with enough tree companies in the area that I think, uh. I think we can work it out, and I'm more than happy to donate, uh, some fundage from, uh, my own personal company too, so. Yeah, I, I mean, I feel that strongly about it.
I think I'd like to say that we're going to, uh, I, I'd like to hear the board's view of us saying. That we should leave that tree for the time being, until we have a plan for it.
If it's only eight hundred bucks, worst case scenario, and we have this much concern, um, in public commentary about it, I think. I think.
I answered the eight hundred dollars to be just to remove a thirty.
One person at a time, please.
If it's, if worst case scenario for removal of this tree, budget wise is eight hundred dollars. Or, you know, well, that's worst case scenario, and we have this much public commentary about this particular tree. And concern about iron rail commission hasn't weighed in, maybe Concom, then why don't we just exclude it from the list?
Exactly.
Well, I'm actually gonna insert, it was only, the eight hundred dollars that I said was only, you're having National Grid remove the. Major part of the canopy of the tree. I mean, where, I'm only talking eight hundred dollars for this large diameter trunk. And whatever branches are left, so that we can allow this, uh, raccoon family or Kate's artistic celebration to survive.
Understanding of Dan's question, I think. Go ahead.
If National Grid doesn't do the work and the town has to do the work, what's the cost to the town?
Of taking the, of the whole thing.
Of taking the whole thing down. Let's say the town has to take it down to the level of the wall. Or, right, uh, within a certain level of the wall. Uh, I think you're talking anywhere from four to six thousand dollars. Okay, so that's different. Oh, yeah, that's what I mean about the eight hundred. I mean, I can, I can get somebody in to remove the large trunk. But, I mean, we, we have to concern ourselves with National Grid removing the concerned limbs. Uh, above a certain level that are gonna impact the power lines and everything else. If they can do that. You know, let them do it.
And I thought what you said makes the most sense, which is have, have National Grid reduce it down to whatever, thirty, forty. And the, the fate of that, what's left will be determined later, full stop.
Agreed.
If someone wanted to make a motion to that effect.
I, I can make a motion to the, to that effect, that, Peter, I think this is gonna address it, that we give when some discretion. As to height of what remains and timing for removal of tree fourteen. If everybody's on board with that, I'll make a motion that I move that we approve the list of proposed. Tree removal from scenic roads by National Grid, as said forth on. The chart, with the exception of the trees designated as leave in column two. And with the condition that tree number fourteen. Shall be removed at a time and to a height in the discretion of the tree warden.
I will second that. And now I would take a vote. I'm gonna call a roll, Week says I.
Play says I.
Anderson.
I.
Pascarello.
I.
Woodland.
Hi.
All right, I think we have to say thank you for the members of the public who sat through our public meeting and gave their comments. And thank you to Mr. Fisk. And Nate, if you're still there. It's hard to see while sharing my screen. I will stop sharing my screen now. Um, and perhaps we will go back to the agenda, I think. Um, there may not be very much left. Uh, that we can really do of this agenda, because we are looking for, um. Input from staff on the master plan update. Oh, I think I can offer on that is that. We have reviewed the applications from the various consultants, and I think the town has selected consultant, but. I don't have confirmation of that, um, did not have that before Margaret went away, so. And if Kate had it to bring to us tonight, she's not here, so. I think we have to table master plan update for the time being. Um, town meeting follow-up, it was, is there anything anyone would like to discuss about town meeting follow-up? The. Uh, zoning. Plant God, the, the, um, the zoning, uh, bylaw. Proposal, uh, did not pass, and Peter is now a select. And Rick is now, but that's not town meeting, that's the election, and Rick is now on the board. Um, and then we have meeting minutes to, uh. To approve. And I do not have these on this computer, so I wonder if I could. Uh, request that we table that for our next meeting. Just because we'll be here for another half an hour while I pull them up, while Catherine sends them to me and I pull them up. Peter.
I said, I. I'm sold on your idea of, of doing it next meeting.
Is, is everyone okay with that?
When is our next meeting?
Uh, it would be May, second Thursday in May, am I right?
Is that the? Twelfth?
May twelfth.
May twelfth, yeah, thank you.
I may not be here for that. I looked at the April minutes, I don't have any revisions to them. I'll, I'll look at March before that, but.
Yeah, I didn't have any, uh, revisions to the April fourteenth. And April sixth, I recused myself from, so I didn't have any comments on that. And I didn't, don't remember whether I looked at March tenth or not, it would have been a while ago if I did. Then the only other thing on the agenda for tonight is, um, I think Peter's request from last Thursday. That we should take a look at the portion of iron rail. Do you wanna describe it again?
I should all take a walk. I, I have a much better idea. I had the extreme pleasure of, uh, two days ago. Stephen Cabana, uh, took me around Wyndham for two, almost two and three quarter hours. Showing me stuff that I'd never seen before. And. Um, and it's, it, it, it covers a couple of areas. There's some major properties, huge properties. Um, some of them are sixty-one A properties, or partially sixty-one A properties. Then at some point, somebody, whether it's open spaces or ought to be talking to these people about like, where do you see this going?
We, um, just as the resident member of the Open Space and Recreation Committee. Uh, we have been having some conversations with Greenbelt, and Greenbelt is having conversations with a couple of the, um, property owners. It's at least if, if I'm thinking about the properties, you are, um, at the corner of ninety-seven and Maple.
Yep.
Is one, and then the Angelini Farm is another one.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, so I, I wanna just, I don't wanna. Say it's all, it's all taken care of, because it isn't, but, um, but you are not the first person to think about this, and it is ongoing. And I'm happy that, that Steve engaged you on it.
Yeah, well, I'm glad to hear, and all he said was, you know, I hope somebody's talking to him. Um, so that's great. And then he also, um. Oh, boy, we went, uh, up into Penguin Hall, because there's a big property back there that goes from. Um, Penguin Hall West, al-most to, uh, Dodge Street. And then he did take me through, uh. It's nice to be in driving, driven around in the fire chief's truck by.
Steve was a member of the planning board for a bazillion years, so it's really good that he did that with you.
I did not know that. I knew we'd done everything else, but.
Yeah.
And so we did go through iron rail, and then we went, um, the most eye-opening. To me, was going back behind Gordon, and how much land there is back there.
It's huge amount of land back there, yeah.
Huge amount of land, and, you know. At some point, you know, it does.
Not all of which is in Wyndham.
That's true, that's true, but it almost goes down to, um, almost gets to Tobacco Road.
Peter, I think you replaced Steve on the board.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Oh, I did?
I think so.
There you go.
Steve or Don, one.
No, it was Don.
David would have replaced Steve.
Then it was Dave, Dave replaced him.
Right.
But I did take, Peter, I did take your advice. I did walk the iron rail property on a beautiful sunny day. Uh, it has some beautiful vistas from the, uh, upper levels. A lot of it looked wet, and I looked at a topo map, a lot of it is wetland, so.
It's really wet. We, we walked it and talked about putting a, a, a footpath through there. Um, and talked to some of the local property owners about, um. Their concerns, they bring horses through there or have in the past, about what a footpath would do to that section. And there was a lot of discussion about beaver dams, um, Open Space and Rec, I could probably pull the meetings, minutes from those meetings.
So. Just to, to me, the most interesting thing was all that property back of Gordon. Then.
Interesting in what way?
Well, it's like, hey, you guys who don't pay any taxes, why don't you give us a little bit of property back here? That's like almost half a mile away from your campus, then we're gonna, uh, commercially develop it. And, oh, by the way, we can probably take it right through to, um, the Manchester, uh, one twenty-eight exit.
Some of that is watershed, Peter, just so you know, it's, it's the watershed for Manchester's water supply. But this seems like a long-range planning conversation that I'm looking forward to having as part of the master plan update. And please, I hope we get there soon.
And I, I think that's exactly right, because it's, I, I, it was just eye-opening to me. Both in terms of, uh, open spaces and potential. So.
It's a lot of great trails back there too, if you haven't been on them.
I've been on a bunch of them, and then, and then there was the whole Tobacco Woods thing with Hamilton debacle. Which is, I don't think that's over.
No, I don't think it is either. And now Waldingfield Road with Ipswich.
Right.
Haven't heard about that.
I did. Okay, that's.
All right, I would take a motion to adjourn our meeting unless someone has other matters, this may not have reasonably been anticipated by the chair.
I motion.
I move.
I motion that we close this meeting.
Mr. Pascarello's second motion as a second.
Yes, I second.
Week says I, Pascarello.
I.
Way.
I.
Anderson.
I.
Woodland.
I.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Catherine, for your patience with us.